Okay, well, welcome everyone to our regular meeting tonight. And if we could start by standing, I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we got a great night here and a great meeting ahead of us. So why don't we start off with our administrator's report on the agenda posting and notification of the meeting to the media?
The agenda was posted at Three Lakes School, Sugar Camp School in town of Sugar Camp via email, the town of Three Lakes, the town of Monaco, and the Demer Library. And the media notified via email included the Vilas County News, the Northwoods River News, WRGO News, WXPR Radio, and WACD, WATK Radio.
All right, thank you for that. Next we go to amendments and approval agenda. Any amendments that you're going to bring forward?
No, not tonight, nope.
All right. Let's seek a motion for approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve this next agenda.
Second. All right, so motion by Michelle, second by Josh. Any other further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None heard. Motion passes five zero. We do have, for the record, Alicia on telephone here, so she's with us via phone, so. Next, routine approvals. We have the approval of the minutes of the August 16th, 2023, regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the August 16th, 2023, regular meeting. Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Michelle, second by Stacy. I would like to make a change. Two-thirds of the way down on the minutes. It's got me here noted, the district is going through facility study and this project need to be included in those plans. I think the intent was there is that we are going through facility study and that this necessarily isn't going to be in those plans, so I just want to clarify that. So I think we just truncate that sentence and stop it, that the district is going through the facility study, period. And now I'll have to ask Michelle and Stacy if you are agreeable to that amendment.
I'll approve the minutes of the, no, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the August 16th, 2023, regular meeting with the change that Mike presented.
Okay.
Second.
All right, so we do have a motion, a second. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Aye? Opposed? None heard. Motion passes five zero. Next we go to approval of vouchers, check register for the period of August 11th, 2023 through September 14th, 2023.
I'll make the motion to approve checks dated August 11th, 2023 through September 14th, 2023 for accounts payable, ACH checks number 232400008 through 232400013, regular checks number 128471 through 128664, invoated check number 128345, and manual checks number 5523 through 5538 in the amount of $521,203.07 and ACH payroll checks number 900040865 through 900041028, and manual payroll checks number 1782 through 1818 with voided checks number 1782 through 1818 in the amount of $260,912.75 for a total amount of $782,115.82.
Second.
All right, so the motion by Josh and seconded by Stacy. Does anyone have any other questions? Hearing none. Call to a vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Aye? Opposed? Motion passes five zero. Next, public comments. Hearing comments from visitors regarding agenda items. Would anyone wish to comment on any of the items on the agenda tonight? Pretty quiet. All right, we'll move forward to the administrative report. Start of the 2023 through 2024 school year update. Terry.
Well, I will tell you, it has been fantastic and fabulous and any other word you want to put in there. We have passed the days of having to be as concerned about COVID and things of that nature, which really gives us the focus back on our kids, our families. Our health and safety is in place as we've had it been, and it's just been a wonderful feel to the year. There's been some inconveniences. Some of our projects, which we had many big projects this year, have taken a little bit longer and control freak that some of us meet are have a hard time when things aren't done when they're supposed to be. Jen is living it with our gym, you know, but it's, hopefully it's going to be finished tonight. It is looking really good. Our new scoreboards are up and installed. The facilities was brought together very nicely by the crew. The wiring with the Heartland, the, our guys who did the main part of it, but Heartland has been on site this past week or so and our clocks are being hooked up. Our fire alarm system in Sugar Camp is all set up, working well, which is a huge step into the current times. Very good news there. I tried to get an initial look at our enrollment. Can't give it to you yet because we're waiting on other schools with open enrollment that they haven't processed yet, but we're looking very close to what we were at last year, I would say. Not a big shift up or down. We do have a smaller 4K class, but we have a really large kindergarten class. So we're almost on a cycle of every other year, you know. It's going to be something that we watch and go forward, keeping track of that. Playground equipment. I actually made a point of going to both playgrounds so I could enjoy watching the kids having fun and it's really helped having the new equipment for the two-year-old, even though we don't have two-year-olds, through five-year-olds. It is virtually a mirror of the big equipment, but it's spreading them out and just the safety factor, I think, has really increased, you know, and they're running like crazy in Sugar Camp. I was like, oh my God, how can you expend this much energy and then go back and learn? But they're doing it. So lots of smiles, lots of happiness. Staff is doing a great job. We had a real focused approach to our professional development this kickoff. We had worked, as I had shared before, as an administrative leadership team to help develop where we want to go with instruction. We worked very closely with our CISA partners and then we kicked it off with them in the back-to-school in-service days. And we are now going forward with our monthly calendar to keep it going with what we want to do and that's best instructional practices, really making sure that the kids have a wide variety of ways to demonstrate their learning. Not, we're not focusing on assessment now, but we're opening that mindset, that thinking to how else can we let them see and show what they're able to do. So feel extremely positive about that. A lot of hard work by everybody, but it's really feeling like the right work. And, let's see here, open houses were very well attended from the little guys that came in for their first 4K experience to our high school and junior high attendance, which was really good to see that high attendance number. People coming in and getting a feel for where, you know, their, what their day is going to look like. Staff has been really super energetic, involved. I feel like there's a great positive vibe and, you know, that sets the tone, that sets the mood. If we're feeling good about people being here, the kids are feeling good about being here as well. And what else? As you can see, I get all geeked up about the beginning of the school year because that's why we're here, you know. We, we want these things to be going on. There's been several posts within our social media that Jen has been showing and sharing what's already been going on with classes. And yeah, I just feel like we're off and running on a super positive note.
That's great, yeah.
Do you have any specific questions about projects? Hopefully we will be getting to disperse some of our out-of-state workers very soon.
Yeah, well, I know it was a pretty heavy load this summer, but it'd be good to see them completed and then put into use, so, yeah, great.
Looking good.
All right. Any questions for Terry at all? All right, we'll move on to new business, starting with a introduction of new staff.
Well, the first introduction we'll do is our new AD and junior high principal, Phil Updike. Phil, I told him he had to talk.
Just want to say a few words. I'm very excited to be here. This is my 31st year in education. I've known a little bit about Three Lakes District before I came over. I was at Lakeland for three years in the near past and, you know, nothing to say. It's been a great start of the year. Got a great staff to work with. We're working on filling some of these coaching positions that are vacant and we're almost there.
Yeah.
So, thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
Looking forward to working with you, yeah, great.
And we have two other staff members. One was Alicia Peters and Ashley, I'm sorry, Ashley Peters. And I had put that brief statement, she wanted me to express her thanks for being hired and how happy she has been coming to Three Lakes. And she told me I should have listened to my friends and colleagues years ago. So she feels good about the transition. And then Ray Grossman as well. She couldn't be here this evening. She said if you want her to come next month, she would make a point of it. But she wanted me also to express that this has been a really good move for her. She's real happy. She's very heavily invested right now with Phil in looking at our junior high and at-risk services, our student support services, I should say. It's going to be a very key 712 position. We've already really started to utilize her before we even have it completely defined as to what it needs to be. But I would believe that, I feel like the support is there like never before. I would hope that Mr. Updike would second that because I did have the opportunity to talk to the staff, the teaching staff last week and I got lots of very positive, you know, reports that they're feeling good, they're feeling supported. Yes, we've got things we got to work out, but they feel like we're making the right moves, which we've talked about here at this table. So it's nice to know that we're making our vision come to be. And in the whole scheme of things, we're supporting kids so we keep them prepared as they keep moving up the ladder to their education, so.
Excellent. Well, if she can show up at the next meeting, we would definitely
Okay.
have her stand up and introduce herself, so.
I will pass that on to her.
All right, thank you for that introduction. And next we go to update from the district goals meeting.
Okay. In your packet, I, your board packet, I gave you two documents. I'm going to refer to the annual goals 2324 draft. That's what we'll focus our time on. I gave you a second where I did a long, it says a long-range plan, but the summary of August 10, 2023. That is where I tried to capture the comments and the vibe, as I say, of what was discussed, but that is incorporated into the other document. So for the sake of time and not being repetitive, I will just focus here on the annual goals draft, okay? So what I did then is, just to recap, we had a really nice team, energetic, a new group of some fresh faces this year again. We had a nice presence of students that were involved. We had three student council members and they gave wonderful feedback and they did a fine job giving both the positives and areas where they thought we could help them have a better experience. I really value that because they are our customers. And I felt that the rapport and the dialogue was very beneficial. So I just wanted to mention that. We had community representation, we had staff representation, and then of course administration was there and our school board members as well. Took each of the areas and what I'd like to do is just talk to you a little bit of the three main goal, three main areas. That's the teaching and learning, the positive school culture, and the community connections. And teaching and learning this year, going to spend a little bit of time on that, but that's where we really heavily focused last year. So we really laid out what I'm reporting out to you now about our professional development plan, our calendar, our schedule, what we're doing. That's, that was all came, coming out of the past year. So when I took the information and tried to condense it down, I kind of created a summary then. And just for those, you know, who are listening, the goals, the main goal was students and staff will become expert learners. That's what we committed to as a district, that we all need to be expert learners as teachers, as administrators, as students. And we're going to really invest in that. And our objectives were to provide the professional learning opportunities for educational staff. Objective two, develop and implement the multiple methods of authentic assessment for students to demonstrate learning. Objective three, embrace and develop the individualized learning and teaching options for all students and educators. Objective four, integrate engineering and design process into K-12 programming. And objective five, continue to advance partnership opportunities by growing connections with local businesses. And while all of these objectives are under the process of being developed, there's more emphasis on certain ones than others. For instance, we have to get the instruction truly where we want it to be before we get fully invested in our authentic assessment portions. So taking the feedback, the summary of the teaching and learning annual goal, I listed for you here what the main messages were. And as I share this with you, I'd like you to feel free to comment or, and if you're open to it, even some of the folks who are there, if they want to add something to it, I would say that is up to you if you would, you would like to see that happen. So teaching and learning. The implemented and completed activities of this past year have built a strong foundation for the overarching goal of all students and staff becoming expert learners. And this was developed by the district leadership team, professional development, and learning the why we must increase academic opportunity and high-quality instruction for all students. Designing learning environments for all students through a high-quality instruction, co-teaching or servicing, and professional collaboration that will grow our skill set as educators. We also talked about how to provide professional development to support the vision of academic success through prescribed and established work time predetermined by date and topic in our yearly PD schedule. And we, we own that we learn best from each other and that peer observation is supported and encouraged. That's something that is sometimes overlooked, but it's extremely important in advancing. And then we talked about academic and career readiness remains a key priority in our high school educational experience as we are committed to grow, to continuing to grow our current and additional opportunities for our students, okay? Now, if you want to take a quick flip to the teaching and learning action plan, it's on page four. I won't go through each of these because at the board retreat, you saw this where I updated you on what was tackled, what was updated, and what's ongoing. But what I did do for you is highlight some of the areas where we will put our emphasis and attention this year. So if you turn to page five, you'll notice that the co-teaching model, which was put into place last year as far as building the framework, getting the idea out there, that was more of an introductory phase. Now this year, we're continuing to support that with helping both regular education teachers and special education teams, learning how that they can work together, collaborate, and expand that into their instructional offerings and opportunities. What we found is that it has to be natural. It can't be that we just say, you two are doing co-teaching and this is how it is. It has to be something that both candid, both of the professionals feel good about. You have to support that with collaboration time. There has to be time to build what we talked about within our retreat, a building of trust, of understanding, of purpose, and then almost becomes a natural flow. So Carrie Volk here, she will be working more with Casey Brettinger and CISA to help work on blending our approaches to education so all students benefit. I always want to make sure that we don't just say this is a special education initiative. This is the benefit all. Because again, when you think about peers learning from each other, if you hear another way to learn or think about something, three people sitting around the table can also benefit from that. So that's the kind of environment we're trying to upgrade and, and develop. So that was one of the goals that I want you to think about that we'll be doing more of a focus on. And then going to page six. Last year in objective three, Justin did a really nice job with getting it established at the high school and junior high came on, you know, they're a little bit further behind, but they came on during the year, as well as elementary had it built into the schedule that we did the what I need. And that has been very successful. We have things, we're still tweaking on it, you know, you can always improve, but that has been extremely beneficial for our students and our staff. And because we were able to get that in place, it allows us to go ahead and move into the next goal. I really thought that the what I need might be a two-year heavy focus goal where now I feel like it's at the point that it's going to have our attention and continue to grow and be nurtured and be what we want it to be. But we can move to looking more at this next goal, establish pure observation and reflection. And we did this by utilizing four hours of professional development time at the junior high and high school level. So the principals have already talked with their staff and they're going to be observing each other and having professional dialogue, what they see, what they learn from each other, ask each other questions. Again, it's a trust-building adventure. It makes you feel comfortable. It should become at some point, hey, now I know what you're doing or I really liked what I learned when I saw you handle this situation this way. And it takes down barriers. We want to get away from the days of just close the door and what happens in here is in isolation because we can learn from each other. And some of our best teachers are our kids when they share and teach us what they're learning. So Justin has worked on this and put it into place. It supports our education, our educator effectiveness, which is our evaluation system. And so it falls right in line with that. Justin, did you want to add anything to that?
Covered pretty well.
Yeah.
Four hours is two, two observations and then two hours of reflection and collaboration with the person who observes. So that's, that's the four in total.
And that
We'll start there. It's, if we need to, we could expand on it possibly, but starting with four hours this year.
And I do think that this is probably going to grow on its own because we've had staff members who have already said, my door is open. People are welcome to visit. So again, it's trying to create a shift in not necessarily culture, but in environment and openness. All right, and then if you turn to page seven, Ryan Bach has done a really good job this past year of working on expanding our career readiness and community of practice. Establish that group through DPI and one of the few in the state. And he had this initial group. We are going to replace one of the people that continues this year. There's some other opportunities that seem to be linked with this as to where we want to take it, where there might be potentially even some grant funding to help us expand this. And maybe at some point, we could become like a mentor school, sharing what we're doing with career and college readiness to help other schools get a feel for getting it kicked off. The conversations, the professional dialogue that I've been shared with from Ryan and from some of the teachers has been really good, really interesting in, again, developing that, that connection with community, with career from the small to the larger audience. So that was quick, but that's kind of where we're at with our teaching and learning. And the other things that we have in our action plan will be continuing. Do you have any specific questions as to this area?
Just a quick question on the peer observation. Does the staff member get to choose the colleague that they're going to visit or how does that work?
So the, one is with a neighbor or somebody in their department and then one has to be outside of the department, someone from a different. And, and we don't have huge departments, of course. But if I'm an English teacher, I can go watch the other English teacher for one of them. And another one is in a different department or elective, you know, with another elective and then another one would be in a core area, a core academic area. So that's kind of the way we're going to go into it for this first year.
Okay, good.
All right, can you skip around? Then if you would come back to be positive school culture. Our goal, that was ensure a safe and welcoming school environment that encourages engagement. We talked a lot about the word engagement last year and we want our students engaged. We want our staff engaged and work to start getting that moving forward. But that didn't get as much emphasis as our teaching and learning. So in our meeting, our retreat, I should say, we found that the things that really kind of rose to the top were both evident in the positive school culture and they kind of trickled over into community connections. So this might sound a little repetitive, but I think that's because of the importance that it kind of, you know, became more clear to us. Objective one was embrace our common Three Lakes School District Blue Jay culture. Objective two, acknowledge and value the individuality of each community, school, Sugar Camp, and Three Lakes. Objective three, increase school spirit and pride through student and staff involvement. Objective four, develop a mentorship program between upper and lower grade levels. And objective five, consider the physical environment to enhance the safety, the health and safety of all. And several of these things are in place or have already been addressed, but they're not done. They're continuing. We found that the common theme was what is a Blue Jay? And we had quite in-depth discussion about that, somewhat tied to culture, but also tied to climate and values. And I would say values is maybe a more appropriate way to phrase it. We talked about if we, if we wanted to define our school culture, what would people say it is? We talked about what is a Blue Jay? If we talk to our students, what would they say it is to be a Blue Jay? That we have to work on this year. We don't have the answers yet. We think we do. I think I do as an adult know what our students would say. We heard what our student council students said, but I think it's a lot broader than that and it would really help us find what is important and valuable to them. So that's an area that we want to really look at. This other area that we heard in both categories was hear the student voice through increased participation in decision-making, planning, and shaping of our school culture. The student representatives that were there did an excellent job, but they reiterated that they have opinions and they liked being asked and they liked sharing the positives and those things that were, you know, more troublesome to them and things that perhaps as an adult we wouldn't think about such as the painting of a building, of the painting of a wall, you know. We want to make sure we preserve tradition and some of that vintage feel, but we also want to stay within modern times. How can we make sure that those are both valued? And then we heard from the students as well as our folks sitting there that the physical attributes of our school need to be welcoming and comfortable. And as I would say, support their learning, but be a place where you want to be when you're in school learning and even just in that field of hanging out, this is where I feel good. I come in, I sit down, I feel safe, I feel welcome here. And that is something we heard from the students. So now you get to skip again to positive school culture. That is on page number eight. Here I kind of just outlined more in the goals under objective one. In the highlight, what is the Blue Jay? Develop a definition and description of what it means to be a Three Lakes Blue Jay. And that should be coming from student, staff, principals, and community. I think we want to do interviews. I think we really want to expand that to having some discussion within the classroom, but perhaps even a survey type of approach where there can be some more opening kind of statements that they can fill in. I know it's a lot of work, but I think it really gives us a true feel for what is thought to be, I'm a member of the Blue Jay family, what that means. So we want to make sure we get those voices. And it also builds upon And it also builds upon what we say we are as a school community, as an educational community, as a community at large, who we are. So I think that's something that with the help of the administrative team, teachers, students, you know, getting some good input, we can develop that and bring a more, this is what we believe we are, this is what we believe defines a blue Jay. Through values, actions, kind of like our productive citizen approach. So that's one that I have listed for you to consider as a focus area for this year. Then if we go down to Objective Number Three. We had talked about identifying primary leaders and participants in homecoming, National Honor Society, the athletic banquets, the Fourth of July parades. That started last year. But the reason this is reemphasized here is again, we heard the student voice. The student voice really wants to be part of what we're doing in the adult decision-making. It needs to be collaborative, again is the word that I'm going to. We heard from the students that they have been very disappointed that the parade was during an after-school time when many children can't be there participate. They feel it's extremely important to keep the Blue Jay hype going from the very littlest kids on. Make it an event where we bring the kids to the parade, even if it is short. Even if it kind of interferes potentially with the tailgate party or maybe it wasn't quite the flow. The flow shouldn't be for the adults. The flow should be for our Blue Jay community and that starts with our kids. So I already have Mr. Updike working on that with the team and everybody. So homecoming is going to be what I would call more of a student-friendly, young student-friendly, trying to keep that and nurture that going forward. Questions on that one?
And we coordinated with the town on that.
Yes.
I just filled out the paperwork.
Did you?
I originally put two to three P M. And the chief's like, nah, that's not gonna cut it. You need to tell me exactly when the parade starts. It's looking like two fifteen is gonna be when we're gonna probably throw that out.
Okay.
Maybe a few tweaks to that. Bottom line is we've got to get the elementary kids back to the building-
Sure.
Around three o'clock at the latest.
Yep.
So they're bussing this night, so.
Good.
All right. And then I'm gonna have you come back to now we're going. Any questions on that culture piece? That's a really big piece, even though it's like two rather simplistic statements. It's gonna take a lot of work and energy this year to get it, I think, to where we want it to be.
Yeah, I like the question. What is a blue Jay? To me, it's always good to reflect. And I think this is a way of finding out what others think. What our students think, what our staff, everyone involved thinks what it is to be a blue Jay. And I think there's a lot to be learned from that, so, yeah, I like that.
Very good. All right, and community connections. This is an area that it's going to take, again, a focus. We opened up the conversation. Our goal is to increase and expand relationships with internal and external stakeholders. Objective one, review and refresh school-related communication procedures. Objective two, establish district-wide co-curricular communication procedures. Objective three, develop a wide-reaching marketing campaign to inform, invite and recruit potential new families and students into our destination district. And four, explore expansion of birth-to-for early connections and opportunities. Well, what we found in our meeting was we really focused a lot on what we want to do to answer the other question of why Three Lakes? Is what is a blue Jay and why Three Lakes? And developing a marketing campaign through outside resources to tell our district story might be the way to go. Because we know what we know. But in the discussion, you know, it came out, bring it to the board, let's talk about this. We should be finding some other resources or venues or a production company, however you would want to put it, that could tell our story beyond what Jen or I could in a professional format. So it's reaching more than the students who are considering Ryland or Northland Pines or Three Lakes. It could be from the Minnesota area, the Illinois area. People are now very mobile and they choose to live where they have quality of life and they bring their jobs with them. So we thought that was an important thing to put on the table and look at exploring that and actually potentially earmarking some funds to make that happen. Along with that, we said the student voice again should be a key component in how that story is told. I thought it was really interesting that when the students brought information to us, they talked about why it's important to them to be in a small school with lots of opportunities. And I believe the message with the folks that I heard sitting there wasn't, we're not missing out because we're small. We have more opportunities because we're small. And I think that's something that's really worth capturing and highlighting when we talk to the outside audience of why they may consider being a Three Lakes Blue Jay at some point. And then the connection with our community at large is really, we have seen our fitness center grow. And this was kind of an unexpected area that came to light. But we had a lot of discussion on it. And we were talking about how do we make ourselves unique, known? And that's why I'm gonna ask in a few minutes that Phil and Justin share some information with you two on that. Just opening the door here, because our fitness center is currently what it's been since I would expect. I'm speaking and I don't know for sure. Probably pretty similar to when it was established. It's kind of the same layout. There's good equipment, it's solid equipment. It's not state-of-the-art or cutting-edge, but it's very functional, it's very heavily used. But when I say heavily used, we know that we are now at over twelve hundred memberships using this that are signed up. And during the summer, there was over seven hundred that actively renewed their membership. So it's not just like people who have a membership and forgot about it ten years ago. And I make this point probably to laboring the point. Justin and I are here in the summer a lot and there was a steady stream of people in and out all different times of the day and hours. So if that's something we want to look at and investing in, maybe we should be talking about that at more in-depth, what we can do to make Three Lakes stand out there. So if I have you take a quick look then at our Community Connections Action Plan. I did mention an Objective Three on page ten, add the student voice. We will determine how we will do that. Jen and myself and the counselors and all, we can develop, you know, how we get everybody into that piece. But then this is the new piece, this is the first time you're hearing about it as a board, is looking at the fitness center as potentially featuring it as a spotlight of health and safety for our community stakeholders, students and staff. And when we started talking about, well, what do we want that to look like? We did have the good fortune of hiring a third person to do some supervision this year with Jeannie and with Tom as far as offering hours where there can be some help and assistance. The folks that we have do a wonderful job, but they are not like, they're not personal trainers. They're just supervisors, which is just great. But we're looking at what if we could prepare to offer something more of that nature? If we developed a program that there would be supervised physical support through a fitness expert? Is that something we want to go down that path? The reason it comes up now is it could be supported, there are ways to support it. And does that attract more people into the district? It's a discussion starter. And so I throw that out to you because we kind of opened that door. When we were at the retreat, we said, things are being talked about, they're being developed, but we hadn't put it totally out there. And that's why we're doing this initial discussion tonight with that. So questions with that before I turn it over to Phil to give you more specifics with ideas?
Numbers speak volumes. I mean, that's a lot of memberships. And so it is a good reflection upon the value that the community has put on that center. So I think there is a lot of opportunity that can be expanded with that, so, yeah.
And I would remind the board members tonight, this is not an actionable item. This is discussion, information, discussion. You know, we and Three Lakes try to think a little bit beyond the box, you know, a little outside of the box. It doesn't mean this is going to happen, but these are possibilities. So I will let you take it over.
First off, I'm an apologist. I had a handout for all of you. I left it on my printer when I came up here, but I'll make sure that you get that as we roll forward. But it's gonna be exactly what I'm gonna discuss at this point, it's just a reiteration. One of the things that we are looking at, you know, with the amount of community input that we've got with the memberships, we looked at that. But we also looked at how we could couple that with some of our school existing programs and how we could utilize that as a whole. We looked at trying to figure out a way that we could do that. And we looked at, you know, establishing and maintaining like a strength, fitness and conditioning program for all of our athletes and programs. We looked at, you know, some goals of improving our athletic performance, reducing athletic injuries and teaching lifelong fitness skills to our students and student athletes. We looked at, you know, this position being something that we could devise training plans and programs using our existing strength program called Team Builder. Our students, just to give you a little bit of excerpt on that, is it's a program where kids can go in depending on what sport they're looking at or what they're trying to accomplish with their workout. This program has hundreds, if not thousands, of different variations of what that could look like. We'd like to incorporate that program within, you know, what we're trying to devise or come up with here. We also would have supervised training sessions. We'd be able to evaluate athletes through this and maintain program records. Also assisting physical education teachers in some of these strength and conditioning courses as appropriate. This person could also collaborate and consult with our athletic training staff. We do, through Aspire Us, we, most of our varsity contests, we have an athletic trainer here. Whenever possible, we do our best to try to make that happen. But this is a position could also, you know, definitely have some ties there as well. So some of the duties that, you know, we see that this, whoever this, you know, however we build this or however this could look is, just to reiterate, we could design and implement all strength, conditioning programs in season and off-season, preseason. And we also could have community members be involved in this and be incorporated to the team builder that we currently have. So we also looked at, again, assisting our phys ed people in teaching and developing strength and conditioning programs for physical education classes. And work in conjunction with cooperation of athletic trainers and rehabilitation and strengthening of injured athletes. We looked at facilitating collaborative relationships among the sports coaches, teachers and community members. Developing system of tracking athletes' attendance and athletes' progress in conjunction with sports coaching. We would also look at something that would complete an annual budgetary proposal. And here's the thing, I mean, right now, when you're servicing this many people, and then what is, was it eleven hundred memberships?
Twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred. That coupled with all the athletes that go through there, that's what we put in the community. You know, Mr. Zeus is busy and I'm with my things, I'm busy. The problem is, how would you, how do you have somebody in there that's looking at the equipment on a day-to-day basis? You know, if there's something that breaks down or something that needs to be reordered or, you know, just someone to organize that situation and be responsible for that. And with the community input coupled with the school, those are the things that we really see. Something that could really blossom into something really important. And something that can really be something that a lot of area schools do not have access to, so. Please ask questions if you have them. I know Mr. Zeus and I have talked about this, so it's something we've been throwing around after we've talked with Terry on this subject, so.
Well, there's three things if I could add quick, three big things. You got student use of the facility. And I'm not just talking to student athletes, I'm talking to most students who just like to be in the fitness center. And we have a problem currently because it's an access problem. If you can't be in there unless you're eighteen, by the time they're eighteen, they're done being students with us for the most part. So we're looking to solve that access problem for our students and student athletes outside of phys ed class, right? The other thing that is a, maybe not a need, but I think is kind of a, could make this sort of a magnet facility, is the community that uses it all over the place in terms of their level of comfort, level of expertise, level of knowledge. How cool would it be to offer some community outreach? Whether it be courses or sessions that are supervised by someone that knows what they have to do in that place? That would be a great thing, I think. And I'm in the peanut gallery of a lot of, overhearing a lot of conversations in the front offices. People renew their, renew or buy their memberships. But generally speaking, folks are thrilled about the cost. Like they can pay it here for a year's worth of memberships what they're gonna pay for a month almost anyplace else. They, some of them literally want to get taken in there and shown how to do stuff. Renee and Jeannie, God bless their hearts, they'll go in and show the facility, but they're not gonna show how to do a Russian deadlift, right? Like, I mean, that's not their, that's not their gig. And so we have maybe a need there. Last but certainly not least, I think we have a lot of work to do with a staff wellness program. And this could be something from a staff wellness, like, we could have someone that coordinates and offer some things to our internal staff. Tonight at our faculty meeting that we had earlier this afternoon with the junior high, excuse me, not junior high, high school staff crew, I threw it out there how many would be interested in hopping on board with a workout platform that can help you, guide you to your goals. And there were a lot of questions, a lot of folks who at least seemed interested in jumping towards something like that. So I'm gonna stop talking now because they act. Those are the three big things that I look at as, like, let's take care of our kids. Let's take care of our community. And I think there's some staff interest in becoming more involved with healthy lifestyle sort of stuff. It could grow. I'm encouraging us that we try it and see, but at this point, those are the three biggies. Go ahead, Phil.
Yeah, I open up for questions. I mean, those are the bullet points, so to speak. I think it's a valuable opportunity for us.
My first thought right away is it's, there's some great advantages. I mean, the points that Justin brought up are great. I think to make this effective, the space that it currently utilizes is not enough. It's not efficient. So this would be something that we would need to, I think, discuss with Nexus. To make this effective, you need to have, you need to have an open facility with the space that it's going to, it's going to allow this. You know, they don't want it to feel like it's a, you know, plant fitness where it's walker, walker, or treadmill, 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 you know, all that, all that kind of stuff. So it could be quite an investment. You know, and maybe Nexus has a way of rearranging our school where, you know, we can utilize things more effectively and gain a bigger space just by doing so. If we were to get somebody, you know, full-time that was willing to or able to do, like you say, some of the classes and stuff, I think we need to keep in mind, you know, maybe holding some of those, if it's a class-type thing, you know, Zoom class or whatever, utilizing it here and maybe trying to facilitate over in sugar camp as well. So we can offer multiple locations for people who maybe can't or aren't able to travel or meet times. Lots of questions, lots of opportunity, lots of time, lots of investment. Is where I first go with it.
It would be interesting to survey the members to see what additional needs they would be willing to support. I mean, the membership is a bargain. And there's probably some room to cover those costs of what they deem to be important. And so, yeah, I think there is a lot of opportunity. It all started with a grant. I don't remember how many years ago, but we bought a bunch of equipment and it's been, it's been well-used, so. And the key is to try to figure out how to maintain everything and keep it in good working order so people will want to come back. And then if there is a need for more services that they're willing to support, I, yeah, I think it's a great tool, not only for community members, but also especially for our students. So, yeah, good stuff. So, yeah, good stuff.
One other thing I saw from the students was, or student wants was, you know, opportunities for work, employment-type thing, you know, around the school. Fitness Center could be a good opportunity for, for that as well.
Yep. Maybe they know how to do the Russian deadlift.
To be fair, it's Romanian.
Or Romanian. Thank you, Alicia.
It's their Romanian.
So are there any other questions about any of what was presented with the goals? Because tried to really, you know, scale it down, it's a lot of thinking and discussion to bring to you so we can move forward with finalizing our focus next month. Do you have any asks of me or of the administrative team that we can help shore up what we bring back to you?
Terry, is there a way to add this to a community survey or even a survey to maybe the membership platform for the gym to see if there's interest in, in classes or extension of a, a fitness program along with our membership? Because I really feel at some level that if there was extra opportunities for individuals, I know we have a lot of individuals in my department and I even do the membership for the gym, but people might be willing to, to pay additional for those type of benefits as well.
Yes, we could certainly do a survey and kind of get a feel for what is acceptable, what they would be willing to support or not support. We also do have funding set up through our Fund 80, which is our community connection, and that's what the, the Fitness Center and Equipment is funded through currently. We could do more looking at that so it's not coming out of Fund 10. So I think there's multiple avenues of resources that could support something like this. We, you know, we could explore that and develop it as we go forward. But yes, I think a survey would be very worthwhile to give us some good information about what our community and actually our staff and students and the whole group at large would be willing to support.
So in terms of the, the goals for this, this coming school year, this that we've already started, you gave a great review, I guess, of the, the meeting and the information that came out of that. And so I would assume, is, are you planning on the October meeting then to come forward then with, I guess, the list of focus that you're going to be implementing and?
Which will be the highlighted ones that we talked through.
Okay, all right.
And again, willing to take any more feedback from you or suggestions, but it's our starting point and, like I said, the ones I didn't go over, that doesn't mean they're not in place, it's just that they're not going to be the focus at this current time.
Yeah, we'll find out what a, what a Blue Jay is.
That's right.
Yeah, good stuff.
Okay.
Very good.
I had one other, one other thought in regards to, I, I love the student involvement idea. I love that they, they want to. Justin and Phil, probably more you on this one. Let's, let's get these kids in, involved in, especially the, the sports kids, I know it's hard in-season sometimes, involved with kid stuff. You can kind of kill two birds with one stone there. You know, so that those young kids, you know, you've got the second and third grade basketball, let's get, let's get a basketball, a couple of basketball kids officiating those games. You know, out at, out at soccer games, have them being sideline judges or whatever, you know, things like that. I know WIA has, has really good opportunities for kids to get there to be officials. I think they even let them do it for free, possibly, but that could allow them some opportunity for, to work for the school and to work with the kids, especially at the younger levels as volunteer, maybe knock out some volunteer hours. You know, and like I said, you're, then you're, they're, you're keeping them in contact with those younger kids and showing them, showing them the way. Kids who are in other programs, like the art programs and music programs, you know, have them as, as volunteers and helpers when, you know, we have like the conference performances or whatnot. You know, help as them, you know, being hallway monitors and stuff. I mean, lots of great opportunities for the kids to be involved.
Add something in there? This is Todd actually had a decent idea this last week.
Just, just a decent?
He, um, so Todd made a point to me last week.
You're writing this down?
What did I do? Are you recording?
Terry, put it down.
He made a point last week when I was having to proof the Robin report about the lack of youth at our sporting events and just communicating that down to our elementary programs, the sports schedules, just, and that was just like a simple thing to do. And I'm like, that actually really supports this goal is to be able to now start telling them, it's, it's an easy thing. It's like, oh, duh, why didn't we do that? But to let them know what those schedules are so that we can promote that better. So that's Todd.
Last night we had the varsity, some varsity football players do the chain game for the junior high game.
Very nice.
Case in point.
Very nice.
Necessities of Mother Adventure.
Sometimes that's the case, right?
It's planned. Got it, Terry?
Yeah.
At the board retreat, it was talked about, what they called it, Teaching Tuesday or Walk-in Wednesday. Is that anywhere in?
Yes, that fits right with the peer observation that Justin's talking about, and that opens the door for it to be voluntary. He's got it scheduled that we are doing this, but that will also be discussed and brought forward that, you know, we'll put up our sign today, anybody's welcome, or start getting that out there.
Cool, awesome.
All right. Everybody's got their questions, comments? Okay, very good. All right, thank you for that.
Yep.
All right, and we go to C, 2023 Five-Year Self-Evaluation of the Status of Non-Discrimination and Equality of Educational Opportunities Report.
Well, I bet you thought when we had the civil rights compliance, that we'd be done, but low and behold, the whole state is now doing this, this evaluation. I did, because I know you have nothing else to read, put in the information from DPI for you. I just want to reiterate with you all that we have a lot of this already in place, but it's going to take some pretty fine tooth going through and making sure that we are meeting the criteria. What we did through, for the CRC report is very much in line with this. I have a toolkit that has been developed through CISA 9 that I'm going to rely on. I have asked my administration or, or team to let them know that I'm going to try to take the majority of the lead on this. And then when there are specific things that I can't get right down to, like, some of the counseling questions and such, I'll have to work directly with our school counselors to, to get that answered. But the reason I wanted you to be aware of it is because it, it is a serious matter for all districts because we are going to have to go ahead and do a legal one posting that says, we are undergoing this self-evaluation. And then after it's done, I will bring a report back to you so you see what it is. It will probably be quite generic and I would even say simplistic because that is what we're being encouraged to do. I think probably Three Lakes has more information right now as we sit than a lot of districts do because we have just been through a process very similar to this. Carrie Eisen and Jen here of West have done a lot with the first round we were due on September 15th, have our first updates, which was a lot of the non-discrimination language that had to go with policy, go onto our forms and such, and that's been done. And so we've got the ball rolling. But this is another one of those things that you will do this, and by the way, December 31st comes very quickly. So just wanted you to be aware of that. And in case you had any questions after looking at it, you can sure give me a call and I can give you a little bit more information.
Okay.
But we will get it done.
Very good.
That's what we do.
All right, anyone have any questions on that? All right, thank you for that, Terry.
Yep.
Next we go to October meeting dates.
Okay, our regular monthly meeting will be October 18th here in Three Lakes at 6:00 PM. And then our annual meeting will be on October 25th at 6:00 in Three Lakes.
Okay. You planning on doing the annual in the boardroom here?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, next, go to E, talking about 2024, setting the graduation date.
The graduation date will be, as always, it will be on that Friday before we have our Memorial Day holiday, May 24th, at 7:00 PM in the gymnasium, Three Lakes High School Gymnasium.
All right, that is an actual item, we'll need to have a motion and a vote on that.
I'll make a motion to hold graduation for the 23-24 school year on May 24th. And I think that should be 2024, correct? It should be, yes. Okay. At 7:00 PM in the Three Lakes High School Gymnasium.
I'll second it.
All right, so motion by Michelle, second by Ash, Alicia. Any further questions on that? Hearing none, I'll call it to vote. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard, motion passes by a zero. All right, next we go to the Nexus Facility Study Update.
Okay, originally, Rob Brown had talked about being here at this meeting, and we have has, had the opportunity to get together as an administrative team with buildings and grounds and take a look at very, very preliminary plans, what they're looking at for our facilities. And with that, there is not at this point dollars attached, a budget attached, and just felt that we came together as a group and said, if we're not comfortable yet having this conversation with more specifics, we need more information before we bring it forward. Since that, I relayed that to Rob Brown, and he said, well, you know, he was just trying to get things going according to how fast or how slow we want it to be. And I said, we want a real thorough report. So we were going to look at October for bringing together a, some sketches, some plans with some budget. He has since told me he would rather do that in November so they can have more concrete information to share with you. If we do A, then it's going to result in this kind of money. If we do B, it's going to result in this kind of money. I felt that as a board, you would want more information than not having information before we start doing, you know, some decision-making. So that's where we are with that right now. I feel like when you have a board meeting, and even if we showed the most preliminary sketch designs, which they were literally changing as we were talking, I think that's what made us uncomfortable, that we have to be really quite certain behind what we're going to do and present, because when it's in public, it can suddenly become from conceptual to this is what they're talking about doing. So we want to have that, you know, under our control, if you will, you know, our, our parameters of what we want to do. And then I know that you all got an email about forming a, a focus group, a focus subcommittee or a committee to say, would this be supported or tolerated in our public? Again, Rob sent it out to you individually to get names and information, but in speaking with, of members who you, of our community who you think might be on a good fit for that board, but I think that we need to talk about it more here at this level, I should say, you need to talk about it because it's important when you're doing a, a task force, as he calls it, that you get a true feel for what the community tolerance would be. We don't want to go down a path of saying, yep, we're going to do this and it's going to be supported if we've only got the yes-men sitting at the table. We have to know truly what that would look like. So there's a couple of different ways that this can be set up. It can be set up as a subcommittee of the board, but then you're looking at having to have reporting out, you know, it's, it's a formal process, or is it more of a task force, as Rob is referring to, and how are those members chosen and established? So with that, I'm going to turn it back to you, Mike, and let you lead the conversation where you'd like to see us go with this.
Okay. So as Terry laid out, we have at least two options, I guess, to consider in terms of getting the information out to community and, and getting feedback either directly to the board, reporting to the board as a subcommittee, or it could be something tailored similar to like what we do during referendums, where we have the information presented to the community and we can invite certain groups, certain members of people, the community that we think might be interested and instrumental in, in this process. And as Terry mentioned, not specifically all yes people, we need something to get response, you know, from, from both sides of, of a situation. And so with that, it could be, as I mentioned, like a referendum where the people come in and, and then they bring that information out to the community. So, so to speak, try to get that information direct as much as possible so that they get the information direct and then they can infiltrate that information in the community. And, and then we could follow up then with a board meeting, for instance. It could be even just a listening session on, on what the community is thinking on those needs. So at this point here, I just want to know your thoughts, if you're thinking of setting up a subcommittee and having them report directly to the board for us to action upon, or going another route to, similar to one I had fashioned? Or is there another idea that you perhaps might have in how to get that information out to the community and getting some feedback?
I guess my question, is this, is this for ideas of things to, to do and directions to go, or do we want to, or are we trying to supply them with options for directions at these meetings? Which, I guess, where are we, where are we at?
Yeah, that's a very good.
I mean, if we're, if we're trying to, if we go at them and, you know, just say it's an open, it's an open book, tell us your wants and needs, I mean, it's going to be, there's going to be a little bit of everything.
Right.
Literally everything. But if we could maybe fashion some, if we had some directions fashioned a little bit, and then I guess my thing would be, or my thought was doing like, very similar, like you say, to the referendums and you have some town halls, you know, sure can't meet on this night, Three Lakes meet on this night, you know? And then say, you know, here's some options for directions, what do you feel? And then they can pick and choose maybe versus having no idea
Right.
what the thoughts are.
What has taken place in terms of, I know there's been some solicitation of information from staff here in terms of needs and such like that. When is the community part going to be implemented?
I think, I think this is where I don't quite line up with doing this group in advance. I think we need to have those plans, at least proposals, that you've already looked at, that you say, yep, this makes sense for what we're going to do at Sugar Camp or Three Lakes or not do, this is how we're going to restructure some of the learning environments or the outdoor facilities. I think that has to be out there to actually look at and have feedback and conversation about. And are we talking about a small scale, like, I'll just use like Sugar Camp for the example, are we, are we revamping some of the special education rooms or potentially looking at expanding a cafeteria, meeting room, you know? Or are we looking at a bigger add-on of classrooms? That's what, what I think you have to be able to have that out there so it's more concrete rather than this conceptual. And I don't think it's fair, actually, in my mind, to try to put out the what-ifs if we don't have a, a place where we can go. As I, as I've said all along, right from the process when we started, I I certainly do not want anyone in our community to think that Terry Maney or the board or anybody has decided, this is what we're going to do and it's going to result in a, a capital referendum. That is not what the message is here. It is, what can we do to improve and meet the needs while, you know, making it affordable, keeping us where we want to be? We want to be cutting edge, we want to be that destination district. But we also have to realize there's only so much in what is a tolerance that our community can handle. And it might not, and, and may likely not even go that path. It's this, you've managed your funds, you've done a great job with deferred maintenance. This is what we're going to do with our long-range plan.
So with that said, I mean, we need that component. To hear from the community. The project has been started, we've gotten some input, uh, internally, so to speak, but the external part is, I'm not sure when that is going to be implemented. Um, I know it was discussed and talked about. And, uh, and then moving forward from that, um, how are we going to address? You know, how, how we work off that information? Are we going to work off of someone that's going to report directly to us? Or are we going to have members invited in for, um, an informational session? After we gather the survey and all the information from, um, all those that have provided information?
So, so what I'm hearing you saying is your preference would potentially be to have a community survey as to their, their wants and needs prior to seeing plans that are being developed?
That's the way I understood it to be initially.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because.
That is what was shared with us.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
That was what Rob said, I think, about sending a mail or whatever. Cause I questioned him if it was going to go to everybody in the district.
Right.
And that would be a great start to get some directional.
Yep.
Feedback. Get some plans and then take the next step of the in-person. In-person input.
So, that, very good, so then I will talk with him about this and what that looks like and, um, how it can be developed and you can take a look at that survey. And that's the first step in getting it out before we would have these informational meetings.
Yeah, good, except, I think, go ahead.
I was just going to ask, would, and would they base some of that directional and maybe some of the questions based on what they see as needs?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
And I'd be willing to to bet that, you know, there's probably not a lot of people in the community that are even aware that this is.
No.
Happening, and the survey is a way of, one way of introducing that information is, is asking them. And, uh, and then all of a sudden say, oh, my gosh, you know, like, they're asking me, so, you know, I've got students in school or I'm tied to the school somehow, or I want to be part of it, and all of a sudden, they're going to be involved. So, um, and, uh, Jen, do you have any thoughts on that process and too, in terms of getting information out as well, in addition to the survey?
I have a lot of thoughts. I guess what Josh mentioned is where the differentiation is, right? Like, a lot of people in the community aren't going to know what the needs are, and that's your job to establish that. And then you convince them that you need those. I, I, I feel like when you're asking them, what should we do? It is a free-for-all and they don't know your needs. So you, what Teri is saying is coming in and saying, here's our established plan, and then you're, that convincing element is there. Whereas if you're opening it up and just saying, hey, what should we do? There's a little bit of, um, that, that seems like backwards to me.
So.
Where you have the plan and then you are convincing them and telling them why you need, that's where the involvement comes in. It's like, here's what we've done, here's what we've, so I kind of feel like asking them for, what should we do is the.
Yeah.
Backwards way to do it.
So, eh, we've already asked internally, uh, what we're looking for.
Right.
Okay. So, are we feeling then that we want to wait on the community involvement, is that?
I think they could probably fashion a survey based on, here's what we see as, as needs. Maybe, maybe large, medium, small, you know, type of, uh, um, I, I guess buffet almost for the community, you know, from Nexus, on what they see. Um, with obviously an other that people could fill in. And then, you know, that's, I mean, that can be the start of the direction, like you said, to get the community, to get the community input. And then, so then you've got, you've got your professional opinion from Nexus on what they see as the needs. Then you can get the community wants, desires, and, and what they'll stand behind. And you can kind of put those pieces together and then start on a direction.
It could come forward as basically this is a draft, so to speak, you know, this is a start. And, but we need, we do need their participation. I think if we wait, my concern is if we come at them with a plan, so to speak, they're going to feel that.
Right, yeah, they've already decided.
That they're missing an opportunity and that this is something that we're just doing. And I would like to get their involvement as soon as we can. But we could start with a draft, I guess, so to speak, of what we've come up with thus far. So then it maybe might be less of a, you know.
A more specific survey instead of a free-for-all survey.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess, I, I can appreciate that concern. And, um, I think, you know, sometimes if, if you, if you want their support in, in participation, I think it's good to ask before. I think that's my opinion on it, rather than, than after, that's, that'd be my concern. Get them at least started into it, but we can come into it with at least some kind of a draft. And, uh, so.
Okay, then what I will do is I will.
Alicia had something. Alicia, did you have something?
Oh, it's not me, no.
Okay.
Just had to make sure she, you know.
What I will do is when I talk with Rob, I will, um, remind him that in the initial layout, we had heard that there would be the compute, the community component as well with the survey. And, um, that's potentially what I think is getting in the way with, why would we, uh, go ahead and establish these groups or task force or whatever that is before this first part is done? And, um, we can fashion that, or Nexus should fashion that survey to be reflecting what has been shared by the other people who have been in this room and, you know, sharing what they see as needs. And with all of their work that they've documented that they see as potential needs for upgrades and improvements. Um, that way it would be a more controlled survey. We're not asking for a dome or a fieldhouse. I mean, we, we want to take that attention off right away because, yes, we are looking at outdoor facility upgrades, but we have to also have it within some kind of context for them.
Yeah, and I think some kind of a narrative to the beginning of it, to put some of it in context in terms of, you know, why we're doing this and such. So.
All right.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll wait for information from Rob. And, uh, and then I guess at this point, um, we've at least introduced a discussion in terms of where we go in terms of if we set up a subcommittee or if we just set it up similar to like what we've done with referendums.
Well, we want to put that question on the survey, would you be interested in being on a committee? Do we want that out there to see if anybody's interested?
Cause if we don't go that route, this, it's going to look weird.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I think those that would be interested will.
Yeah.
Participate. And we'll, we'll see them in, you know, perhaps not only present, uh, in the survey, but also perhaps present as part of the process as we go through it. And I think they might almost identify themselves as people that we could be looking upon to share this information, so.
And that could possibly be a step three, I mean, you know, survey first, then the town halls, and then at the town halls you could identify, you know, if we chose to go forward with the committee, that's where that could come.
Yeah.
Could, could guide itself.
I have a quick question for Teri.
Go ahead.
Is, is there a way you would like us to feel like, if he reaches out to us directly again, would you like us to just talk to you?
Yeah, and you know what, Alicia, I will advise him to, um, work directly through me while we're going through this process. Um, so you don't feel like you have to respond to anything. So we'll take care of that right now. He and I'll have a conversation to recap what we talked about tonight and going forward, then he won't reach out to you individually unless it's coming from me. And then my preference would be that I'm the one making the com- the communication.
The board supports that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Makes it easy.
Thank you.
All right, anything else on that, Teri?
No, that, I think.
Gives you what you need on that?
Yes, it does.
Okay, very good. Thanks for everybody's participation. And next, we go to consider approval of personnel report of new hires, resignations slash terminations.
Okay, I have a long list, so here we go. Resignations include Lori Mannion, track assistant coach, Sue Corant, paraprofessional, she retired, and Grace Stefanic, paraprofessional. Terminations, Louis Ritter, head volleyball coach. Hireings include Tyler Maney, head football coach, Patrick George, assistant football coach, Dan Shepley, junior high football coach, Craig Mandley, junior high football assistant coach, Al Vodas, football program assistant, Justin Zeus, football program assistant, Jen West, junior high volleyball coach, Brad Volkman, boy soccer coach, Stacy Volkman, boy soccer program assistant, Lori Levandowski, cross-country head coach, Nate Coach, cross-country assistant coach, Carrie Pharo, girls basketball program assistant, David Ditzler, National Honor Society advisor, Carly Veers, fitness center supervisor, Elizabeth Grzinski, head volleyball coach, Carly Veers, high school assistant girls basketball coach, um, Kim Maney, junior high volleyball Team B coach, and Carly Veers, high school head track coach. So Phil has been a busy A.D.
Okay, so there's some additions.
Yes, there's three additions that came this afternoon. And Carrie will up that, edit that in the, um, board docs. That is Carly Veers, high school assistant girls basketball coach, Kim Maney, junior high volleyball Team B coach, and then Carly Veers for high school head track coach.
All right. Let's take the motion to approve the personnel report.
Make a motion to approve the personnel report as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion by Josh, second by Stacy, any questions?
What is the junior high volleyball Team B coach?
Jen is doing it by herself right now.
Right.
Yeah.
It's essentially seventh grade, right?
Seventh grade, pretty much. Or as, um, Phil and Jen have talked about, how they, being mid-season like this, how they determine those duties to work out. Jen would be the lead.
Yeah, Jen, Jen has covered both A and B teams to this point, so that salary would be prorated to reflect that responsibility, so.
Sorry, I didn't know they were called A and B.
Well, I, I would either and saw it tonight, but I did, I was looking into our schedule, is it Schedule B, Teri? Our appendix.
Appendix, yeah.
It, it shows it, it lists it that way as board approved positions, and that's how it's listed, so.
Okay.
Very good. All right, so we have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor, the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Aye, opposed? Motion passes five zero. Next, we go to consider increasing substitute teacher compensation. Teri?
What I did is I put in your, um, board docs, some of the research that I gathered from the schools that are probably most immediate to our area for your, um, reflection and thoughts on this. We are currently at one-twenty a day and sixty for half a day for, um, licensed teacher subs. Um, as you could see, that there's quite a range, one-thirty, one-forty, one-fifty are the, um, going rates from the lowest to the upper end. There are some rates that are considerably higher than ours, but they're a little bit more getting towards the Wassa, um, um, Merrill, you know, a little bit more out of our, our area. Um, the reason this is coming up is not because of our steadfast subs that we have, we have a, a great crew, but, you know, there's only so much of them and we have some major long-term positions coming up. We have, um, babies that are going to be born, so we have some longer-term subs. And we need to attract those who are not necessarily within our sub pool. And it has become clear that, you know, twenty dollars a day or makes a difference if you're only thinking ten or twelve or fifteen miles between districts. Um, I think we had a call today asking what our pay was for subs. So this is with the idea that we would be in line, probably on the upper, instead of the mid, medium, lower, um, with our immediate districts and, um, maybe attract some new folks who have the abilities, the capabilities. But, you know, when I put my driving time in, my gas time and such, I don't know if it's worth it. This might entice a few more highly qualified, which is what we're looking for. We want, when our teachers can't be with us, we want the best of the best in front of our kids. So that is why I brought this to you. It's, um, I am recommending the one-fifty for a, a full day and seventy-five for a half a day. Like I said, it is on the upper end, but, um, I do think it is in line with those around us. Some places are giving memberships, they're giving bonuses. If you sub a certain number of days, then you get a certain amount of money in bonus. Uh, some are doing free lunches and such. I really don't want to get messy with that kind of crossover, to be honest with you. Carrie has enough to do with the food service and such. I think if it's worth it for the compensation and we get some of the long-term, uh, people in here and we get to know them, we can make a longer-term relationship with them. And so that is why I'm bringing this to you tonight for your consideration.
Teri, quick question for you on Rylander.
Mm-hmm.
Based on your research, you're seeing that typically once they're through that ten-day period in the school year, then they move up to two hundred and five?
Yes, yes, yeah.
But after, alive.
I'm sorry, Alicia, you broke up a little bit, will you repeat that?
But no matter how many years they've served as a substitute, the first ten days of the district calendar are one forty.
Yes, that's what they have posted on their website and it's, I, I think also believed on a more of a long-term sub, like if they're in a, a position, um, for a longer amount of time. Now, Three Lakes, we wouldn't do it that way because to me, if you're going to have somebody in a position for a longer time and it's going to be at a, a higher rate, then you want to make sure that they're licensed as a teacher and if at all possible, in that area, not just because they meet the qualifications to sub in the state. So we are going to be more selective about that.
Yeah, good point. A question I have on half-day, do, do we use that much? Do we have difficulty hiring people for a half-day?
I thought we did, um, I've got to do a little bit more investigating here. I think what we tend to do is if it can be filled in-house, which our staff has done a phenomenal job of trying to cover for each other, we can avoid that, sometimes you can't. But if we're hiring them for a half a day, then I want them working for us a half a day, not just covering a class or two. And, um, we're going to have to clean that up a little bit more. I've, I've had two situations this year that just came to light and I'm like, okay, we have to really look at that. Generally, when we have a sub, a lot of the time it is for a full day because we have full-time FTEs or they're sharing between two buildings. So if they're Charlie, they're, you know, in Sugar Camp P.E. in the morning and they're coming to Three Lakes for P.E. in the afternoon.
Okay, all right. Okay. Is someone prepared to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to increase daily substitute teacher pay rate of one hundred and fifty dollars per day, seventy-five dollars for a half-day as presented.
day, $75 for a half-day as presented.
Second.
All right, motion by Alicia, second by Michelle. Any further questions?
Terry, any thoughts as far as budget impact?
Caleb and I did talk about it briefly before. Yes, but I think it's manageable, and it's something we have to do. We do plan for substitute teaching. What's happening now is, we are not filling subs, so that budgeted money is not necessarily being used, but we are really stressing staff and administration, because Mr. Grzinski can't be everything from the 4K teacher to the sixth-grade teacher to the, which...
He has to do PE to learn all four...
Yeah, so I...
I like teaching English, but it's not the limited amount of time, for the all of your kids' sake.
It's an all-in test for everybody.
I think it's what we're...
Yeah, no, I understand the need, it's not, it's not that, I was just making sure that...
Right.
You know, we're covered.
Yeah, we're covered.
All right, any other questions? All right. Call to a vote, all those in favor, the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed? None heard, motion passes five zero. All right, very good. Next, we move to the school forest camp three update report.
I just learned that we have some new information that you don't have in your board packet. Pine Box, Pine Spock did submit their response to the administrative law judge, and the DNR, and Ron Stadler, who represented us. So that is now in the hands to be read and reviewed, and so starting on Tuesday, yesterday, there's a 30-day period for that to be looked at, and then we also, in this time now, are going to be reforming a response. When I say we, I'm talking about the DNR, along with Ron Stadler. They'll be making a response based on that. So that's the information I have for you on that right now.
All right. Any questions?
Was that submitted right at the end of the window, or...
That I don't know.
All right, very good. Next, we'll move to district-related positive happenings.
I'll just, I'm gonna second what Terry started with, just from my standpoint, from my job responsibilities, the custodial staff was phenomenal, phenomenal this summer. I had to schedule everything. We had wireless project that they picked up last minute, because I was gonna hang those, and Dave just said, no, we'll do them. Had a schedule on the paging, everything went off. These guys were in and out of here faster than anticipated, because there weren't any issues with anything that they'd done. It was, it was excellent, especially, special thanks to Ryan and Spencer, because they did most of the wire runs, and it was just, it was awesome. Very, very good.
Yeah, excellent. How many miles of wire?
I don't, I don't know, you'd have to ask.
You probably don't want to know.
There's, there's 10 or 12, I had boxes, empty boxes where the school came on, we were sitting on them.
Yeah. Good.
Saw a really quick story that goes along with the, starting with the school year theme, that I think is a really good, like, indicator, highlight of, like, why this is a good place to live, it's a good place to work, to go to school. As many of you know, Jen puts out pictures all the time to social media about what's going on, and the first day of school includes some pictures of the kids out here in the parking lot for the, for the first day of school, the morning breakfast out in the parking lot, at the breakfast tailgate. And shortly thereafter, in the front office, we get a call from a community member, and it went something like, who paid for that breakfast? And so, because, I'll be honest with folks, well, last year, the kids paid for all the breakfasts, that was completely a surprise. This year, I did help with the principal's food budget, subsidize some of their shopping, you know, for the breakfast food items. Okay? So I told her that, that the school helped to pay for some of this. And in some places, that sort of conversation can go to a kind of an ordinary place, it really can. And, okay, and then she rattled off the address of the school, yep, okay, cut, hung up the phone. Couple days later, there was a check for a couple hundred bucks to help pay for breakfast.
Aww.
That was pretty cool.
Yeah.
This is the sort of place where we live, ultimately. That was neat, like, it could have been a, why are we paying for breakfast for kids? You know?
Yeah.
Instead, this was a community member who donated exactly what had been, for, no before, yeah, for some of the food stuff. So that was pretty cool.
Yeah.
And, and along with that, there's kids out there that are doing all the grilling and the organizing of it all, and, I mean, those, those guys were out there very early.
And they welcomed your staff, am I right?
For sure. They invited their teachers, which, all right.
They're bribing teachers on a...
Our kids!
Our kids!
I'll add one. The post I made about our EMT class was highly, highly received by the public, so I had tons of comments about it, and then we did have one reporter reach out and ask to do a story on it. So eventually that will turn into something, but it was just immense response and support from the community on that one. So last I looked, it had a reach of over 5,000, and I, that was a week, you know, a while ago, and I look too, so I know what's going on.
I noticed the photos when they were out in, Mr. Vodas is doing water clarity and such. Some of them had waders, some of them had, like, just boots, and some of them, some just had shoes. Is that, is that their choice, or...
I guess it's their tolerance, buddy.
I think the kids with waders were sent on some of them.
There's a full gamut, I mean. So, yeah, good stuff, great pictures.
I'll just add real quick, along with some of the maintenance stuff I already mentioned, we also had cubbies for 4K that were installed in windows. Keisha painted basically all summer long, all the playground equipment. And then also, open house was, I mean, we had 95% or more of our families that came in, so it was incredible.
Wow.
Cool.
Very high attendance.
That's huge.
The attendance overall, was it that much higher, do you think?
I mean, for, I think elementary is always pretty high. Junior high school is way higher this year than we've seen the last couple. There was two, there was two progress, or not progress, schedules left in the freshman class. I mean, everybody else's, they can pick theirs up.
Wow.
That's pretty decent for a school. That's not, that's not normal, in a good way.
All right, very good. Well, thank you for those positive happenings. Next, we go to the WASB correspondence updates.
I just put a reminder in there, again, that the Region Two dinner event will be on October 17th. Alicia and I are already registered to attend. Do we have any more?
Stacy's going, and Josh just gave me his.
Hey, wonderful. So we'll have a, we'll have a good representation then.
You got mine too, right?
Okay. And then, the second part of that, not the dinner, but I did receive in some information this week, actually it's dated August 31st, but we just got it recently, signifying where the board members are and your level. So Stacy, you are, congratulations, you've achieved Level Two with the WASB number recognition, which is cool. Josh, you've got Level One, so this is based on points in participation and things that you've been doing. So that came our way. And then Mike, you're a Level Five. So, I don't know, maybe we should have a crown for you or something, but...
No.
So they're going to, re-recognizing this at the regional meetings as well. And then Michelle, you are now at Level One as well. So, congratulations, and thank you for all that you are doing for our, our district. That's really says a lot, so, that's what I feel.
Congratulations, everyone. Good stuff. And here we are at the end, right? Adjournment. We'll take a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
A motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, motion by Stacy, second by Michelle. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? None heard. We are adjourned. Thank you all for joining us tonight, and we'll look forward to seeing you again soon. Thanks, Alicia.